May 5th Birmingham City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Oversee Owoski Moore, Senior Pastor of Mount Zion Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Counselor Stephen Hoyt from District 8. Please stand.
Let us bow. God, oh how we love you. Your name is magnificent and your acts are unexplainable. We thank you now for this council and our mayor and we lift both up now to you and we pray that you would grant them wisdom, knowledge, understanding to infuse a contagious spirit in this city to continue to cause positive change to happen. We lift their families up as they serve our city, that their families lack nothing and that every need that they have, as they meet the needs of the citizenship of this city, their needs are met as well. This is your servant's prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call a Roman's clerk. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundie.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Rafferty. Council President Protem Roberson.
Buenos dias, Senior Clerk. Feliz Cinca de Mayo.
Councilmember Scales. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Good morning.
The minutes, we have a motion on the minutes from February 10th and 17th.
Mr. President like to move on the minutes.
Second.
Roberson Lundie.
All right. Voting should be up. Councilmember Parker, Protem Roberson.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoyt.
I'm logging in as we speak. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. That vote should be up.
All right. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Minutes are not ready from February 24th through April 28th. We have any announcements of boards and agencies?
No, sir.
Good. Let's move on with the consideration of consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with item number one. Page eight, we pick up with items two and three on consent. Page nine, we have items four through seven on consent. Page 10, we have items eight and 10 on consent. Page 11, we have items 12, 13, and 15 on consent. That's 12, 13, and 15 on consent. Page 12, we have item number 18 on consent. It was added during pre-council. Page 13, items 19 through 21 were added to the consent agenda. Page 14, items 23 and 24 were added to the consent agenda.
22, 23, and 24.
22 as well?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Page 15, items 25 through 27 on consent, with item 26 being added. Page 16, items 28 through 30 are on consent. Page 17, items 31 through 34 are on consent. Page 18, items 35 through 38 are on consent. Page 19, we have items 39 through 44 on consent. Page 20, we have items 45 through 50 on consent. And page 21, we have items 52 and 53 on consent. Page 22, items 54 through 56 are on consent. Page 23, items 57 through 60 are on consent. Item 60 was added to the consent agenda. And I think we have a couple of addendum items.
Yeah, two addendums, travel.
Oh, did you see? Okay.
That we'll just do through unanimous consent.
Okay.
All right. Do we have any council members wish to speak to the consent agenda?
Mr. President.
Council Scales.
I don't have that addendum. Do you happen to have a hard copy?
I just have this one they just brought me.
And I usually don't object to it anyway.
It's a travel addendum for, we're gonna take that up. It's not on, it's not an addendum. It's unanimous consent.
Okay. I did.
Do you have anything on the consent agenda? Council Parker has one too.
Well, wait a minute, I want to finish, Mr. Parker.
I'm saying Council Parker has a travel item too. But go ahead.
Oh, okay. Then I'm sorry if I missed.
Do you have anything for the agenda?
Um, I did have a question in regard to, hold on just a moment, I was making my little notes. Was item number 17, page 12, on consent?
No.
All right. Okay. And also.
Item nine, which is a companion item, is not on consent either.
All right. On page 15, item 26, if I can get just a little bit more understanding of what that is, that is just dealing with the normal summer employment that we always do, is that right? Okay. So, my only question is how these, the applicants, how are they selected? I've been interested in that process. Anybody know? If you know, I don't mind.
I do.
You do?
Yeah, well, I think they advertise with Fox 6 and the kids come in and fill out the application.
Okay, it's Fox, kids and, I meant Fox 6 jobs and kids? Is that what we're talking about? Okay, so then that can remain. Thank you, Counselor. Okay, then that can remain, Mr. President, on consent agenda and then you can come back to me in just a moment if you don't mind.
All right. Let me go back over to consent agenda real quick, so everybody knows. Page two, item one. Page eight, items two and three are on consent. Page nine, item four through seven are on consent. Page 10, item eight is on consent and item 10 was added to consent. Page 11, items 12 through 14, or 15 are on consent. Item 14 was added, well, item 14 will be withdrawn from the agenda. Page 12, item 16 will be withdrawn and item 18 was added to consent. Page 13, item 19 through 21 are on consent agenda. Page 14, item 22 through 24 are on consent. Page 15, item 25 through 27. Item 26 was added to the consent agenda. Page 16, item 28 through 30 are on consent. Page 17, 31 through 34 are on consent. 18, 35 through 38 are on consent. 19, 39 through 44 are on consent. 20, 45 through 50 are on consent. 21, 52 and 53 are on consent. 22, 54 through 56 are on consent. 23, 57 through 60 are on consent. Item 60 was added. And then we have those two items. Do we have any members of public who wish to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You would wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium, speak to that item. All right. Do we have a mover and a second on the consent agenda?
Mr. President like to move on the consent agenda.
Second.
Roberson Lundie.
Okay. All right, voting should be up. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
All right. That item passes. Mr. Clerk, call up item, will it be item nine and 17?
Item nine. In ordinance to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015 by transferring $1,500, $1,500,000 from Cross Plate to One More Pool and appropriating $1,500,000 to Regent's Baseball Stadium. And what was the companion item?
17.
17. Item 17, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement among the city Public Athletic Cultural and Entertainment Facilities Board of the City of Birmingham Pace, B&amp;G CRD Joint Venture LLC, and Robbins and Martin AG Gas and Construction under which the city will pay Pace, and Pace will pay to Robbins and Martin AG Gas and Construction Design, builder for the Regent Field Stadium project to account of B&amp;G and CRD Joint Venture LLC, the developer of the project, the sum of $4,100,000 available, payable as an initial payment of $1,500,000. Six annual payments of $371,430 each beginning on October the 15th, 2015, and one final payment of $371,420 and as full and final payment of any and all amounts owed to or claimed by Robbins and Martin AG Gas and Construction with respect to the Regent Field Stadium project.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to refer these committee to hold.
Lundie, Rafferty.
Mr. President?
To refer to committee hold, Mr. Mayor?
This has already been referred back to the council. It's been over how many weeks?
Seven weeks.
And I'd rather for the council just voted up or down and be done with.
All right. Well.
Mr. Clerk, we have a motion on the floor to refer it to committee to hold. Council Hoyt?
Yeah, I was just, well, I was just gonna say, we had asked for an update and we wanted the contractor to come and so we can ask questions and that has not been done. And so, I'm hoping that when we refer it, that we get what we asked for.
We will. We will. Mr. President, the council was supposed to establish the meeting. Some council members have talked with the contractor and other individuals. You know, this has drug on long enough and as I said, I'd rather have an up or down vote so we can move on from this issue.
Ready to vote?
Voting is open. Vote should be up.
That item passes with one no vote from Council Scales. Next item, Mr. Clerk, will be item 10 or 11.
Item 11. It's on page 10, ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute a franchise agreement which grants the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham the non-exclusive right to install, operate, and maintain the bike share system, including but not limited to bicycles, kiosks, docks, platforms, and other attachments and buttresses therein, and to make any and all necessary expansion and improvements thereof in, over, and across and through all or any portion of the streets, alleys, avenues, or public ways of the city of Birmingham as may be specifically approved and permitted and to utilize with permission of the affected utility companies, the facilities of such utility companies which within public rights away for the purpose of providing the bike share system within the city to be exercised in such manner only, however, as to offer the least interference with public use of said streets, alleys, avenues, public ways for a term of 10 years, all under the terms and conditions of the bike share franchise to be published as required by state law and city ordinance, the franchise to be effective upon execution by the mayor and completion of the publication. This is the first reading, so I need you see to entertain it.
All right. Mr. President, before the council voted on this item, I was gonna bring it up under the mayor's report, which I have yet to give. I'd like to bring Lindsey and I don't know if Atticus Roma is here, but just for a quick presentation so the public know exactly what we're voting.
All right, let's move for unanimous consent and then we'll have.
Move the item, Mr. President.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. We have a motion for item.
Move item.
Move the item.
Second.
This before us, Lundie, Hoyt.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President and Counselors, you know, in most large metropolitan areas, it's not unfamiliar to see pedestrians riding bicycles throughout the downtown and neighboring communities. We are proud to announce that more bicycles will be seen throughout Birmingham as well as, as well. The city of Birmingham recently joined Rev Birmingham in announcing a new bike share program that is coming to our area. Here to give us more detail is Lindsey and her team. Let me put it that way.
Hey, how are you all doing? I appreciate you letting us present for a second today. Like the mayor said, Lindsey West with Rev Birmingham, I'm the Director of Bike Share. And we have partnered together, Rev and the Regional Planning Commission for quite some time, working on this project and we have greatly appreciated all the support that we've received from city council and from the mayor's office. This is actually a demonstration bike that will actually be on the streets in September when we launch, 400 bikes and 40 kiosks throughout the downtown area. And this demonstration bike still has a little bit of fine tuning to do, but we were able to unveil that and show this to the community and all the safety features that are present on the bike to promote individuals using it in, on the streets or in our parks and safe areas. So, 100 of these bikes will actually be electric pedal assist, so it's 100% pedal powered and controlled by the pedal. And we'll be the first electric pedal assist bike share program actually in North and South America. There are four others and they're all in Europe, Barcelona, Madrid, Birmingham. So, we'll be joining that list. And so, it's a very exciting time for us. The manufacturers are out of Quebec, Canada, but they have committed to manufacturing the kiosks here in Birmingham and for any other US contracts that they secure, they'll continue to manufacture these docks and kiosks and the wave finding panels here in Birmingham. So, I think it's a win-win for all of us and it's been a very exciting time. So, look for these 400 bikes, 100 being pedelec, 300 being regular bikes, in September. Any questions?
Now, this is an exciting opportunity for the city of Birmingham in conjunction with everyone that has worked on this project. It gives us a new dimension to getting around the city and it adds to our transportation arsenal, especially as we get ready to welcome the world to come here to Birmingham for the World Games. So, I wanna thank Lindsey and David and everyone over at Rev Birmingham and the entire team that has worked on this project to let you guys know, really do appreciate you getting us to this point. And I've been to Washington DC, Philadelphia, and other places that have this program in place and to have the electric assist part on the pedal assist, I'm looking forward to that part, okay? But, Mr. President, that's all I have on this particular item and we can come back to the rest of the items later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, I don't know if any other council members wanna speak to it, but I wanna just congratulate you, Mayor, on your leadership really to bring this forward and of course Rev, RPC, and everything that you all are doing to help advance our city. I did not know though, Mayor, that this would be the only one in North America. I was, I just came back from Israel a few weeks ago and Council Lundie, and I know Mr. Protem was there as well, but you probably remember seeing those people ride, it was tons of people riding around on these electric bikes. They didn't look as nice as this at all, Mayor, but they were, they had the same type of, you know, they were pedaling and then they, you know, they were just, and they were just zipping around everywhere. I almost got hit by about three of them when I was jogging on the Mediterranean. But, I was like, man, I gotta get one of those. And I did not know that this is what we were doing. I didn't know that's the type of bikes we have. So, you know, this is, that's big, that's a very big deal. It's great news and something that, that Mayor, you should definitely be proud of. As a Mayor of Birmingham to have the only one in North America, I mean, that's incredible. So, I just wanna, you know, thank you for, thank you all, congratulations. And Mayor, I look forward to riding one of those bikes too and try to see as soon as I can, 'cause I, when I ride my bikes on some of those hills, it gets kinda rough. But we're gonna check those bikes out. Mr. Protem?
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I think this is outstanding for our city, the collaboration with different sectors of our community, to come together long with the city of Birmingham, the mayor's office, and the Birmingham City Council to make this possible is truly tremendous. First one in North America. It's very historic for our city and this is something you see coming in a lot of other cities throughout the world. My question is, for those that are not, I guess, as, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Capable of riding these bikes, what kind of educational process will there be? How can they learn how if they're not capable to ride these bikes? And just kinda give us an update on what will it take to make everybody, you know, capable of riding one of these bikes?
We've absolutely thought through that and we'll have a community engagement coordinator and some outreach individuals that will be hosting monthly or bimonthly free, you know, classes to come out to certain areas where there's safe zones, such as Railroad Park will be a good example, where people can practice and actually learn how to ride not only the pedelec but also the regular bike. One of the reasons we selected the pedelec feature was because it reduces the access, the barriers to access. So, individuals that are maybe elderly, obese, maybe recovering from a knee surgery or something like that can access a pedelec and feel a little more comfortable that they're getting that additional assistance that they need to ride these bikes. The pedelec is truly pedal assist, so it's based on your pedaling, it's not a throttle. So, we don't have to worry about somebody, you know, taking off on one of these and not feeling in control, but we'll absolutely offer safety education courses free for anybody that wants them. The handlebars, there's actual places reserved specifically for that safety and education message for individuals. And we're gonna do anything and everything possible to get people comfortable and providing, you know, these kiosks and areas that are safe zones where people feel comfortable before they potentially venture off and explore more of the city.
So, there's, what liability as far as insurance coverage and, I mean, how's that handled? Is there a waiver that the individual has to?
Yes. There's a waiver whether they walk up to the kiosk or they sign up online or on their app through a membership that they sign as well as we have system insurance that will cover, cover the whole system and that will be bared by Rev Birmingham by the bike share program specifically.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tyson.
Yes, I wanted to see if the, see the council can all together train on the bikes? Can all of us train at one time together?
We can try to coordinate that.
Try to coordinate that.
Certainly, we'll make ourselves available for that. I'll have four finalized bikes, not demonstration bikes, by the end of this month.
Are you gonna have some on the western side of town?
We're working through the planning phases right now and where all these kiosks are going. We're, the core, the city center is something that we're focused on in the first phase to make the core system really strong. That's something that we learned as a best practice from other communities, but the final locations are being worked through and hopefully we'll be releasing those and coming back to you all very soon with that. And I can answer that question more accurately.
Crossplex area would be a great area. So, in the final locations, make, make sure that's one of them.
Fully noted.
All right. Thank you. We have, the motion is before us. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Voting should be up.
All right, that item passes unanimously. Next item, item 14 and 16 were withdrawn, so it would be item 51, I think, Mr. Clerk.
Yep. Item 51, which is on page number 21. A resolution accepting the lump sum proposal of AT&amp;T Atlanta, Georgia in the amount of $12,519.68 for the purchase and installation of conduit in the city hall for internet services. This being the lowest and best proposal submitted and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with AT&amp;T and substantially the form contained within the proposal documents and in accordance with said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this item to the Technology Committee.
Roberson Hoyt. Ready to vote. Councilmember Hoyt. It's being referred to committee, so we'll take it up in the committee.
Councilmember Hoyt, thank you, sir. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, should be item 61.
Item 61. On page 24, a resolution setting a public hearing June the 2nd, 2015 to consider adoption of ordinance to amend the city of Birmingham zoning ordinance, Article 6, supplementary regulations and modifications by amending Section 9, signs, regulations to allow for advertising on bus stops by the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority and by bike share organizations on public bike share kiosks filed by the Department of Planning, Engineering, and Permits. This is the first reading.
All right. Need unanimous consent, bring this item up.
Well, it's set in a public hearing.
Set in a public hearing.
Move the item.
Second.
All right.
Hoyt, Councilmember Hoyt, okay.
Roberson Hoyt.
All right, voting should be up. Councilmember Hoyt and Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt. Thank you, sir. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes unanimously. We have, that public hearing will be set. We have two travel items we need to bring up for unanimous consent and then we'll vote on them. First one is Barbara Harris, mayor's office, traveling to Washington DC on May the 10th to the National Forum on Youth Violence Prevention. And that amount is $1,005.70. And then we have William Parker, Counselor with the City Council, traveling New York, New York on May the 7th, turn on the 9th, $1,601.80.
To do what?
For the CGI Foundation Partners Meeting, I'm sorry. Clinton Global Initiative.
Clinton Global, the one with all the money?
Yeah.
That'll be June.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
Move the item. Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, now we have to move those items.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, those items pass. All right, Mr. Clerk. Yeah, council, can we move to reconsider the bike share item? That was item 11, I think. Council Scales just wanted to note her affirmative vote, Mr. Clerk. So, let's move to reconsider item 11.
Move to reconsider item 11.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, we need to move the item again.
I'm gonna see item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, that item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. All right, that's it. Mr. Mayor, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, Council.
This Friday, the Keep Birmingham Beautiful Commission will host the Great American Cleanup in Lynn Park on Friday, May the 8th. We have Ms. Brenda Dent here to give us more details. Brenda, how you doing this morning? Good.
Morning.
Hey there.
Morning, Mayor Bell, Mr. Patton, and the entire council.
Morning.
It is, every year, we do a clean campus contest as part of our Great American Cleanup promotions and we send invitations out to all of the schools in Birmingham to participate. This year, we had 11 schools to participate and out of the 11 schools, we had three that actually came in first, second, and third places. Charles A. Brown was the first place winner. Oliver Elementary and Arrington Middle School, they were our three winners. And those, all of the schools we visited were very well maintained and they looked wonderful. But we do have judges that have to make a decision because we can only afford to buy three buses for Keep Birmingham Beautiful. And we do have a sponsor, Azipco, assist us in actually paying for food and also for t-shirts and for other items that we'll need to make this celebration for the children because they've done such a good job. And they have t-shirts this year that says, "I keep my school clean." And we're trying to engage the children in keep, in being proud of their schools and doing this. And in doing that, we actually bring them environmental education. We talk about environmental facts as well as pollution that will affect our waterways. Mr. Durekas Cooper is here. He's with the Birmingham Storm. Mr. Durekas Cooper is here, he's with the Birmingham Stormwater, and he's partnering with us along with Jefferson County and along with the Botanical Gardens and Roughness Mountain, so that we can bring the children the information and make environmental education for them, but give them some in, some, some learning information about the environment and the, uh, the different things in the environment. But we cannot hold our event this year in Lynn Park due to some construction, so we will be at Patton Park, and we will be there from eight o'clock until two o'clock P.M. But the, um, and it starts, um, it is, it is on Friday, May the eighth, so if you want to come out and see the children, we should have about two hundred and fifty at the park, at Patton Park, so any of you that want to come out, you can, but I have Mr. Cooper here because he's going, he would like to tell you some of the information that he will be talking about for the children, as well as me talking about beautification, recycling, and anti-littering, and as part of that, we have promotional fans that have the children on it, and it says, "Reduce, reuse, recycle, keep Birmingham beautiful, clean and green," and it tells the recycling days and the time for the recycling, but, uh, Mr. Cooper would just like to speak to you for just a moment.
Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, councilmen and women and, uh, the mayor and, uh, Ms. Dent for making this opportunity possible, uh, like she said, my name is Durekas Cooper, I'm with, uh, P.E.P. Stormwater Management, and, uh, what we like to do is promote and teach stormwater, uh, management stewardship and as, as well as environmental stewardship, and every chance that we get, we like to go out and talk to the public, just educate them, and, uh, we'll be doing it, doing that Friday by way of playing games, and we have a game there that we're gonna be playing called, uh, Water Jeopardy, and, uh, we've done that before, and, uh, the kids really enjoy that game, we'll be playing that as well, just sitting there, just being a presence for the kid to see and to give them, uh, as well as stewardship, but as well give them an ideal of, of people with environmental and scientific backgrounds, and maybe, hopefully, we can, uh, convince some of them to be future scientists, and, uh, and, uh, just, I like to put this out here too, we like to promote and, uh, educate every chance we get, and, uh, you can, uh, if anybody wanna check out our, we're on the City of Birmingham webpage, and you can also call the City of Birmingham Stormwater Management, our number is two five four seven 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 one, so if any one of you, uh, know where we could present or, uh, talk to more kids, can help get the message out, and our main message that we like to, uh, get out is only rain down the drain.
Are there any questions?
Councilor Tyson?
Good morning, uh, the anti-litter program that y'all have, that doesn't exist anymore?
Pat Mitchell retired two years ago, and anti-mi- anti-litter is a separate program other than, it's not as really associated with Keep Birmingham Beautiful, what we do is that we were supporting each other, but Pat has retired, she asked me, could I take that on, but that was a large undertaking, and being that it was not a City of Birmingham sponsored program, I couldn't do that, and I'm, I work alone.
Who was running that program?
Pat Mitchell.
She was.
Mm-hmm, but she's in Florida now, she comes up occasionally, but she has retired, and now I don't think anyone is actually running that program.
I volunteered to do it, uh, either Abbott, Councilwoman Abbott could be a good one too.
I love those red and white striped socks she wore.
But, uh, the program is really, we try to do things to actually fill in for that, like celebrate the children with their clean campuses, doing Earth Day projects, doing the Urban Forestry Fair, until we can get us a real program that may be able to be engaged and get more sponsorship to do things that Auntie Litter did.
Councilor Abbott?
Well, as always, I think that everything that the Keep Birmingham Beautiful Commission does is a hit, and, uh, and this is another one, uh, because the children are really the wave of the future, you'll see adults throwing things out their car windows, you don't see the children throwing them as often as the adults, so, uh, but I wanted to ask about the time at Patton Park, you said May eighth, from ten to two?
No, it will be from eight to two, because the children usually arrive about eight-thirty, between eight-thirty and a quarter of nine, the buses pick them up after they've gotten to school, and the buses take them back to school, and they have their teachers and chaperones and other people will be there to assist with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Next, I wanna ask, uh, Judge Sparks to come forward, uh, the month of May has been designated, I'm sorry.
Uh, the month of May has been designated as National Drug Court Month, our Drug Court Program has been proven, has been proven to be, to make a profound difference in the lives of the individuals who go through the program, I would like to call on the judge along with others, uh, to give us more information and to receive a proclamation on behalf of the City of Birmingham.
Thank you, Mayor, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see you this morning, I have with me some of the staff of the, the Birmingham
Municipal Drug Court, we started the drug court in two thousand, uh, and eight after the council saw fit to apply for federal funding, and since that time, we have gotten approximately two point two million dollars in grants for our municipal drug court, I, I wanna add that a municipal drug court is a strange animal in the, uh, drug court community, not many cities have seen fit to get their own functional drug court, and we operate ours at the same level as the others, um, this, uh, this month has been designated as National Drug Court Month, and it just so happens that each May, we have Drug Court Graduation, uh, Drug Court Graduation is next Tues- next Tuesday evening, Tony, uh, Cooper from, uh, Jesse's Place is going to be, uh, Jimmy Hill Mission is going to be our guest, our guest speaker, but we've had great success with it, we've touched the lives of, of over seven hundred and fifty indi- individuals, we've had over three hundred individuals to, to graduate, not just graduate, of the ones who have graduated, the recidivism rate for those people is less than ten percent, so we're talking about people who had drug problems when they came in, they stayed in our program for up between eighteen and twenty-four months, and they've, they now live drug-free lives, so we're, we're very excited about, uh, about what we've been able to do, we also have the honor this week of having the interim Director of the National Drug Court Association, Ms. Carolyn Harden, is gonna come in and perform what's called an operational tune-up, sort of a training for all our team to bring us up to speed on the latest practices in the drug court, drug court movement, we believe in training a lot, each one of the individuals who graduated from our drug court, in addition to being drug-free, may have performed over one hundred hours of community service, so not only are they receiving from the City of Birmingham, we make sure they give back to the community, um, as well, and so, at this time, if it's appropriate, may I'd like for these members of the team to introduce themselves.
My name is Mark Hubbard, I'm a court referral officer slash, uh, drug court case manager.
Good morning, I'm Patricia Henderson, I am the Gun Court Case Manager, also Drug Court Case Manager.
Good morning, my name is Larisha Cade, I am an Assistant City Attorney here with the City of Birmingham, and I am the prosecutor for the drug and all of the specialty courts, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Walter Garfield, I'm the Drug Court Coordinator.
Good morning, my name is Latoya Brown, I'm the Senior Court Clerk for the Specialty Courts.
Councilors, um, about a week or two ago, we had a number of municipal court officials come in from all around the state, uh, here to Birmingham and, uh, looking at best practices and things to improve the court's ability to, uh, manage this caseload, but to also look at how we can, uh, work to keep our jail cells, um, um, low in terms of the number of people who are sent there, to develop programs that will, uh, have a positive impact on people's lives, and no program that we have is more effective than the Drug Court, uh, program that was instituted, uh, here by, um, Judge Sparks and the team that you see behind us, and I wanna thank each and every one of them for the outstanding job that they do, uh, to make a difference in the lives of those people afflicted by, uh, drug usage. This proclamation that I'm about to, uh, read, uh, is in, is in commendation to the hard work that they do each and every day, and it reads, "Whereas over the past twenty-five years, drug courts have served over one point four million individuals, and whereas drug courts have now recognized as the most successful criminal justice intervention in our nation's history, and whereas drug courts save up to, uh, twenty-seven dollars for every one dollar invested and produce up to thirteen thousand dollars for every individual they serve, and whereas seventy-five percent of drug court graduates will never see another pair of handcuffs, and whereas drug courts significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce drug abuse and crime, and do so at, at less expense than any other justice strategy, and whereas the City of Birmingham received federal funding to establish a municipal drug court in two thousand eight and received additional funds in two thousand ten and two thousand thirteen to enhance the services being provided, and whereas because the City of Birmingham Municipal Drug Court, uh, because of the drug court, more than seven hundred and fifty citizens have received intervention, and to date, over four hundred individuals have graduated, and drug cour- and whereas drug courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of drugs and crimes, we all rise, and whereas the time has come to put drug court within the reach of every eligible person in need. Now, therefore, I, William A. Bell, Senior Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Drug Court Month and urge all of our citizens to stress the importance of drug courts in our city and the nation to help individuals to live positive and productive lives, Judge, if you would come forward. I know you are constantly looking at ways to improve the quality of our judicial system here at the court, and I wanna thank you and the entire staff that you've assembled for the hard work that you do, in particular as it relates to our drug courts, thank you. Councilor Tyson? Do you have something? Okay. Well, I do, uh, Councilor Skales? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. President, but before the rest of everybody leave, Judge Sparks, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I, I really appreciate what you're doing, uh, for municipal court, period, as a whole, um, I think that as, as a first term council member, uh, I knew that you had a, a lot to do, um, and second term, I'll say that you're getting it done, uh, and, and I don't expect perfection, I just want the heart and the willingness to try, and, um, and we do have some, some ailments in our community that have to be addressed, and everybody can't just be thrown in jail, uh, it's gonna have to take some rehabilitation, and it's gonna have to take some compassionate people to be able to help rehabilitate citizens who have issues, that's just the bottom line, so I thank the mayor for bringing you, uh, and everyone, your staff, here with you today, uh, I will say to each and every one of you, uh, you make a difference in ways that you don't know, uh, because a lot of times people think it's, you a council member, you don't, uh, interact with regular society, and I can tell you that I do, and because I do, I wanna tell you how much I appreciate what you all are doing, it's easy to be able to tell a person they're a drug addict, and this is the reason why you're there, but it's another to say, I understand where you are, but I'm gonna help you to get where you need to go, so I wanna say thank you to you all as well, and I'm glad to see you young lady this morning, uh, I'm just gonna eyeball you, 'cause I don't want nothing to get political, but I hope your future is bright where you are, thank you so much, Mayor, for bringing, um, I always wanna say revenge, but, uh, Judge Sparks before us today, well deserved, hope a lot of folk take advantage of the program, thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Councilor Hoyt?
Yes, well, um, I think it's an excellent program, certainly wanna thank the mayor and thank the judge, bringing his staff, uh, but if you've never been to one of the graduations, uh, when you hear the testimonies of those young people, and some of them are not so young, some of them are old, too, but when you hear the testimony of those persons and how, uh, you all have attentively, uh, nurtured them in a way and given them a new alternative on life, um, it, it makes a difference, and you can see it and feel it, uh, when they speak and give their testimony, so I, I think it's a great program, uh, certainly it's, it's innovative, uh, but very, very much needed in this city, and so, uh, Judge, uh, kudos to you and the staff, I know, uh, Ms. Henderson personally, and I know she has a heart for people, and so, those are the kind of folks, and, and, uh, Mr. Garfield, I know he was a boy scout and, for a long time, and, uh, but, you know, it takes, um, a plethora of folk who are concerned about people, not just wanna put them in jail, but want to empower them, and it takes an extra effort, you know, um, having been a manager, uh, in public housing, you know, we got a, a lease that says, if you put too much paper, I can put you out, but do, but how do I help you to transform, how I help you to transition and, uh, and to move beyond where you are, and that's what you all are doing, and that's the challenge and that's the task, and you all are doing it very well, so I appreciate all of you, uh, this morning.
Thank you. Councilor Tyson?
I, you, y'all already know I appreciate your program, uh, a lot of you are, um, people that e- end up in your court do volunteer work over in District Six, and every opportunity, I have a program in my district, and I have a celebrity or someone I think will have great influence on them, I do, uh, bring them over to your court, and we do have Vivica Fox coming on the fifteenth, uh, but I don't know whether I'm gonna be able to get her over there, 'cause I know y'all might end earlier, she comes at, uh, she speaks at one fifteen.
We have an afternoon docket as well.
Okay, so I tried my best to get her over there.
Thank you.
All right.
If I can add this, Ms. President, um, it's not on Drug Court, it's on Veterans Court, we have, we have one of the oldest veterans courts in, in, in the state, if not the oldest, we have about forty members of the citizen, of our community who are actively involved in Veterans Court, and this, this mu- Memorial Day, they're going to perform a community service, which we think is somewhat new ye- unique, we call it Operation Final Salute, and we've found out that there are about two hundred and forty military, uh, former military members buried in Oakwood Cemetery, and, uh, Operation Final Salute will be them, um, taking the opportunity to go and put flags on each one of the graves, uh, some of those graves go back as far as the Civil War, um, and we're going to go and put flags on those graves and have a ceremony, just to memorialize the, uh, the sacrifice that those indivi- individuals made, and, um, I'm saying it now because I'm sure you'll hear something, uh, about it later, but they're excited about it, they've, they've done the groundwork for it, gotten a layout of the cemetery, and, uh, it'll be a great opportu- great community service for them, so I wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. President, uh, I wanna ask all councilmembers to go out.
I wanna ask all councilmembers to go out and have a Corona, and Ms. Abbott, you have a shot of tequila and happy Cinco de Mayo. That's all I have. Uh, Council Abbott, Mr. Mayor, wanted to know if you rode that, um, that bike to work this morning? No, that one didn't have pedal assist on it. She says seniors and overweight and all that good stuff, I fit all those categories. Okay, Councilor Skales?
Thank you, Ms. President, Mr. Mayor, uh, we need some assistance, please, on Lilac, excuse me, Lilac Drive, that's L.I.L.A.C., which has been already reported to your office, that, uh, they're requesting the citizens in that area, uh, for trash pickup that hasn't occurred on Bellhurst Drive, four hundred block, matter of fact, let me go back, five hundred block of Lilac Drive are in need of trash pickup, four hundred block of Bellhurst Drive, uh, the citizens are complaining about potholes that need to be filled, they have called, uh, three one one, as we've told them to do, uh, and we provided your office with the reference number, uh, but they've called at least three times to try to get those potholes fixed on the four hundred block of Bellhurst Drive, also on the eight hundred block, or to be exact, the address is eight zero eight Idlewood Drive, this is, um, a vacant property that has a weed, uh, overgrown, which is basically causing a nuisance to the community, um, and they're asking for, uh, the city, uh, to please help in that regard to that particular property, also the four thousand block of Fieldstone Drive, Philstone is in one word, uh, there are bags of trash, uh, that has, that needs to be picked up, the citizens are requesting, uh, for that to happen as well, uh, also, Mr. Mayor, lastly, uh, we're respectfully asking assistance, uh, from the Law Department in regards to a fiscal agent RFP as advised by the Law Department, uh, I was told that the Law Department, um, is advising that there needs to be an RFP for that, so I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, with your, um, authorization, as well as, uh, Mr. Patton, if we can get some assistance from the Law Department in that regard, since we're in the budget process, I'd certainly appreciate it, I do wanna say, Mr. Mayor, too, that I do thank, uh, Public Works, uh, for the hard work that they've been doing in, in the eastern area, particularly addition- work that they've been doing in, in the eastern area, particularly District One. Uh, I don't want that to go unnoticed. Every week, we are making, uh, requests, I always want to let you know personally and publicly, uh, that we're very grateful when they are doing what they're supposed to do. So to Mr. Thatcher, and to the gentleman I'm looking at right now, I want to say, uh, that all of the Public Works workers that are working in that area, Counsel Scales really, really appreciate what you do, and that it hasn't gone unknown, and I wanted to say that publicly, that I thank you for responding to us in a timely manner. Thank you, Ms. President, that's all I have.
Ms. Protem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Got a couple items, Mayor. If we could get a report on the, uh, developments of the second phase of Jefferson Avenue, I was in the Gracilla Heights Neighborhood Association meeting on, uh, yesterday, uh, evening, and, and, uh, they brought up the concern, we received some complaints via, uh, email, uh, regarding that, there are potholes, uh, on the detour, uh, uh, roads that are, uh, in conjunction with the construction developments. Um, and I did talk to Mr. Bitters earlier, but if you'd like to provide some updates, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, yes, sir, we'll be happy to get an update for you in writing, uh, this week.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, secondly, I want to-
Ms. Protem, let, let me interrupt also.
Okay.
Mr. President, I think at your next, uh, committee of the whole, you know, we set aside funding for each council district for, uh, roadway repair, uh, in particular for potholes. I think you all need to, uh, take that up, so we develop a procedure, uh, because every week we're getting, you know, requests for, uh, pothole repair, but there's a, a line item that you all have that can take care of that, we just need to get a procedure as to what the council, um, how the council wants to proceed on that, rather than hit or miss, and going hither and thither, uh, on it. So we, we, we need to have some guidance and direction from the council.
We'll, we'll, we will take that up. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Protem.
Thank you. And in relation to this project in particular, I think the construction was, was the cause of a lot of the potholes, so that's under the contract, but, uh, we can talk about that more in committee of the whole. Uh, secondly, um, I want to tell you, Mayor, I support you in your efforts and your trip to Montgomery, to the State House this afternoon. Uh, I think the gambling bill legislation that's been sponsored by, um, Representative Marsh is one that's needed, and, um, I know your leadership is, is duly needed and that supported that effort, um, as we need funds to support our state deficit, but we also need funds to support our educational system. And I truly believe a gambling bill is the answer to a lot of that, uh, and will support us. So I, I just want to commend you for going down there, to stand firm on your position, uh, for this city. Uh, we have Birmingham supported, uh, gambling and other referendums, and I think it's due now that this comes to the voice of the people for a public vote. Um, we have seen many other states surrounding us benefit financially, uh, particularly Mississippi. And they say Mississippi is, is behind Alabama. Uh, so we, we gotta progress, and I just want to let you know that as a councilman, I support you on your stance and support of that bill, and hopefully we get the, uh, majority support for both the Senate and the House to move forward on that bill in Montgomery, and, uh, just want to let you know that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll speak to that, um, after the other council members. Counsel Tyson?
The Paly neighborhood and residents have been complaining about, uh, Gloria Road, uh, the block between Flora Street and Maple Avenue Southwest in front of Henry Crumpton. That road is narrow, and it's very little lighting out there, and they also wanted to, um, to try to get it put on the next road project, project also. And, um, on, um, I guess it's, um, Denison Avenue, between Fifteenth and Jefferson Avenue, uh, it really needs something done about that street, it's just in terrible condition. Uh, uh, the paving on, uh, between and pick, from Piggly Wiggly, uh, all the way down to Jefferson Avenue, uh, they stopped midsection, and it really looks good, but I know we're, uh, have plans for in front of family reunion on Jefferson and Pearson, uh, and I would like to see if we can get an update and see when that would be paved, and when we can try to get something done to Denison Avenue. Thank you.
Counsel Hoyt?
Um, yes, um, I noticed that all of our exits, um, with respect to Ansley, um, overgrown, lot of trash and paper, in, in particular, around Bush Hills, um, Ansley Avenue, uh, and this is where the folk get off to go buy cars and, and really come into Five Points West. If we can get those areas, um, tended to, 'cause it just looks bad, um, that we, they getting off the freeway, and it's, um, very, very o- overgrown, and I know we might be behind in cutting grass, but it's also a little filthy around there, and so, uh, hopefully we can get that taken care of, because, you know, Limbaugh is investing a lot of money with this new, um, dealership, building, you know, rebuilding, and I just, I got a little deterred, um, yesterday, getting up on the freeway, and all this trash is right there in front of their place, and the same thing with Honda, several Honda. Um, if nothing else, uh, maybe we can get it done for the, for the, uh, for the business, if we can't get it done for the, for the citizens. Um, and also Avenue I exit, there's a light that's out, um, it's dark, and it's nasty, and it hasn't been cleaned either, and this is where I get off to go home every day, uh, but it just doesn't look right. Um, and the on ramp and the off ramp, now they came out one day and, and cut a little bit, but they didn't, they didn't finish, and, uh, and they had picked up the paper. So, uh, if we can get that done, that would be, I'd be appreciative. My last one has to do with clarity. Uh, Counsel Scales, you allow me, Mr. President? Now, you said there's an RF, RFP being done for, uh, for fiscal agent?
Am I allowed to respond, Mr. President?
Yeah, I, well, if the, if the judge could explain that one to me, please.
Yeah. I didn't mind, I, I just-
Okay, yeah, well, he's here.
What is your question, sir?
There's a RFP, you have to, uh, get a request for RFP for fiscal agent?
Let me approach it from this point of view. Anytime that public funds are expended, which exceed fifteen thousand dollars or more, then, under the law, that contract has to be put out for bid. And so we were asked to work on a contract that, uh, required the use of a fiscal agent, and I, I'm not aware of any exceptions as to how those contracts are treated any different than any other contract that comes before the council.
Well, Judge, I, I guess I'm a little confused, because professional services is something that doesn't have to be, uh, bid it out, and because we do it every day as a city, and I know that the mayor engages in contract with different folk, um, on behalf of the, of the city as consultants, and so this is no different than that, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm, well, I'm a little, well, and then the other thing is, if anybody charges more than fifteen thousand dollars to dispense some public funds, then I think you got the wrong fiscal agent, quite frankly. And I know that Rev doesn't charge us a dime, uh, to do that and to monitor that, and so why would you, uh, require that if they don't charge you to, uh, to dispense the money? That makes no sense at all. And I think we're just creating, uh, layers and layer of bureaucracy, uh, to, um, to minimize what it is that the council can do. And you all need to be aware of that. You all really need to be aware of that, and coming up with all these different rules, you know, um, I don't speak, you know, the Law Department come over and tells what we, always what we can't do, but you need to tell us what we can do. And I'm telling you, this is professional services, and it doesn't have to be bid it out, because you can't treat the council different than you treat the administration and its function and its, uh, fiduciary, uh, responsibilities. Uh, Judge, I'm a little amazed by some of this stuff that's coming up.
Mr. President, may I respond?
Yeah.
The statute, which covers bidding of public contracts, specifies specifically what areas are considered to be professional contracts. A fiscal agent does not fit within any of those categories. If it was a professional services contract, it would not have to be bid it. And so that is the, um, the area in which this contract fits that's a little bit different from a consulting contract and other contracts that, over the years, have been determined as professional services.
But there's a distinct dichotomy in what you're suggesting and what is being proposed.
Counsel, what we, what we need to do is-
Because there needs to be a discussion on that, because I, you know-
Yeah, what we need to do is just have, um, if, Mayor, if you, if you don't mind, uh, have Judge or someone from the Law Department prepare a memo or something detailed-
I'd like to see the statute.
-why we're doing that or whatever, so we'll, so we'll just have it in writing.
We need to start reading.
So we don't have to have this discussion up here on the day, it's because we're not going to come to a resolution today anyway on it, so it would just be better to have it in writing. So if you would allow someone from the, your Law Department to respond to it, that would be helpful.
Certainly, and just for the record, uh, the judge holds me to the same criteria that he holds the council.
Thank you. Counsel Tyson? Counsel Hoyt?
I wanted to ask something else, not about that. I have a, uh, I have-
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, uh, Counsel Rafferty, she's not spoken, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was, I just had one quick one I wanted to ask. Mr. Mayor, um, I wanted to ask if Public Works could take a look at the lights along East Lake, uh, on First Avenue North in front of East Lake Park, where we have the American flag and the other countries' flags. The lights are out, and that compromises the integrity of the American flag being unbladed at night.
That would be traffic and engineering.
Traffic, okay, whoever, and it's just those lights right there at the flags.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Scales? Or, I'm sorry, Counsel Abbott, you have something? Go ahead.
Yeah. This is relatively, um, minor, but it's a, a big deal in that I know that the, the Municipal Court sentences people to community service, and I know that Counsel Hoyt was talking about all the trash at the exit ramps on the interstate, and I was wondering if we could strike a deal with the Municipal Court to have some of that community service worked cleaning up these places that we don't have time to get to, because picking up individual pieces of trash is very time consuming.
The, um, uh, Ms. Abbott, and I was intending on responding after, uh, Mr. Hoyt, um, had spoken about it, but the state is in the process of cutting the grass now. They, they sent out a crew in advance of the, um, uh, tractors, uh, to clean up the areas, but they've started, before they started on the western side and worked their way to the east side, now they've started the east side, working their way back to the, um, west side. Uh, I don't know if, uh, any of the council members drove in from the, uh, western side, I think just beyond the airport, uh, they're cutting, and they're cutting, uh, towards this way. Um, and once they reach the city limits, uh, then they should have all the areas. But we have established a program of community service within the, um, um, Municipal Court, and they're working in conjunction with our Public Works, uh, Department to get people out there. I think that was an issue about transportation, and they may have a van or, or a bus now, but, uh, we'll, we'll make sure that they get out there and clean up the, um, uh, the roadway, but the grass is being cut as we speak.
And we, and we used to use people from the jail, and I don't know whatever became of that, but they helped clean up the roads and sidewalks and things at one time, and then we quit.
Well, you know, uh, we, we're, we're taking a look at jail operations, and we're trying to decriminalize some things that, uh, often lead for people to get placed in our jail system. Uh, I want to take a look at how we can reduce the number of people that are actually sentenced to jail, and to do more community, uh, service-related projects. Uh, that is why, uh, we took the initiative in the first place to set up this pilot program. And once we work out all the kinks with it, I think, uh, Charlie Williams came down to the council about three or four weeks ago to talk about that program. Well, it is continuing, uh, our biggest issue is getting people to and fro, and then the liability issue, and, uh, we're working on all of those elements, uh, because I think that is a way to multiply the number of people that we have cleaning up particular areas, but we do have, um, uh, community service crews out working now.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Scales, your second time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President. Had a couple of more items for you, Mayor. I mentioned it on last week, but I wanted to reiterate this point again, this is about the Wynwood Calico Ditch Project. Uh, the Wynwood Baptist Church, which I'm sure you know Pastor Davis, uh, they understood, and at least even I thought as well, that that Wynwood Calico Ditch Project was going to go behind the church, because that whole, uh, situation in regard to the flooding behind those homes is also behind the church. And so I was asking, um, in the last council meeting, um, you know, in regard to giving the community an update, uh, because the pastor has called, uh, because it has created such an issue for the church, uh, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we did think that that was a part of the Phase Four. We only had three phases, but then it went to a Phase Four, so we thought that pretty much, uh, what you and, and I were able to get accomplished would address that this time. So, uh, if you could have that department, meaning planning permits and engineering, to hopefully see about us getting it done, not just an update, but getting that part done, because that's what we were told, um, we'd be grateful. The other thing, um, Mr. Mayor, that I want to bring to, well, not necessarily to you, Mr. Mayor, you, Ms. President, want to discuss it on the day, it's, but I will tell you that fiscal agent, uh, part of it, that, that needs to be addressed quickly, please, sir. Uh, what I mean by that, I'm talking about, we're in budget cycle, and all of us got various projects, one of the entities that was named, I do use them, uh, and so with that having said, that's why I was asking, uh, since the, the Law Department has advised of, you know, things going a different way. Uh, but, but it's a time sensitivity there, Mr. President, and I hope you can respect me on that, uh, is, is, uh, that's why I'm asking the mayor to authorize the Law Department to begin it, because we actually, uh, our discussion, uh, not given a directive, but only asking of the Law Department, actually started back in the first part of March. So I just wanted to make sure, uh, that you knew that, that that's, that's something that really need to be resolved, and, and the mayor giving permission for that. Um, we had one other thing, uh, that I wanted to bring to the mayor's attention, is to, that we still have issues with two things. One, if you come, Mayor, going toward, uh, going westbound lane, going towards the eastern side of Birmingham, Counsel Rafferty, it is still dark over there, I don't know what that's all about, but if you're on the interstate, it's literally black dark. Uh, and, uh, so I wanted to say that because there was an incident that happened even with myself, but I was in the, uh, westbound lane, uh, but nevertheless, just going back home, it's just dark, and that's not just covering District One, that's going on up the road. And we do still have these eighteen-wheeler trucks that are parking alongside, Mr. Mayor, these businesses, and they are just taking over, so when they, when folk talk about potholes, uh, on the various, uh, businesses and so forth, we have to explain to them, the city can't just go on private property. But it's these eighteen-wheelers that are contributing to that problem, so, Mr. Mayor, if we can have assistance with the East Police Precinct, Captain Treadaway is a jewel. If we can get help with, with ticketing these folk and, and enforcing it, then they'll stop parking along these, uh, businesses on their private property. So just wanted to bring that to your attention again, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Tyson, your second time.
Yes, I have a, a, a lady on Tuscaloosa Avenue, she, it was from abandoned property next door to her, and, uh, the house was tagged, she got the house torn down, but in the middle of it, she, uh, developed breast cancer, so it was only, I, that was before I became a city council, there was hardly nothing left on the property. The, the, the city came out and finished cleaning it off, uh, it was about five bricks, I have a picture of it, and now they want to charge her fifteen thousand dollars for just that, and I know for a fact, that's all it was, because I seen it with my own eyes, and when they was out there doing it. And I have, I, I, I need some, uh, I, I sent it to the Law Department to get that waived, uh, she has, uh, her breast cancer came back again, and I feel like there's a lot of stress on, on her, and that she did get the property- And I feel like there's a lot of stress on, on her and that she did get the property taken care of, which, uh, she ended up buying and doing it, because it was next door to her and she didn't want it next door to her. And it had been, uh, emptied for, I don't know how, how many years before she did that. So I would like to see if we can get that, uh, looked into. And also, the summer is here and Lockway Gardens is vacant. We have, uh, about four more houses that has became Section Eight on Woodland Avenue. That will put it like at twenty-two houses, and that means it's more kids on that street. I am very concerned about those children in Lockway Garden this summer. I talked to the parents, the parents work. And, uh, something has to be done about Lockway Garden and that name, in that street, where all of the residents in the apartments over there, in the summer is here and children will be out of school. So we'll see if we can do something about Lockway Garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and just one other thing before we, we have no more speakers, but I did want to say, Mayor, uh, Proton mentioned earlier about you going to Montgomery. Uh, and I think that it's very important, uh, for us, and particularly for you, to go down there representing the city as the Mayor, uh, and really standing with, um, Senator Marsh and those others that'll be presenting this legislation. And, uh, while I support gambling, uh, as, if people want to do that, I believe that they should. More importantly, I support the people's right to, to, to vote and for their, a right for their voices to be heard. And we have not, uh, the legislature has kept, uh, the citizens from coming to the polls and voting for many years on this issue. And in nineteen ninety-nine, the last time we had a vote, uh, maybe the people of the state wasn't ready. But I believe that if the legislators are down there, um, and the people are saying that they would like to have an option to vote on it, I think that they should. And to me, voting on this is, is, and giving the people the right to vote, is no different than what we did back in two thousand and twelve when we passed the bond referendum. We can say all day that we want to do something and we want to help the community and we want to get money to do the different projects in our neighborhoods and all that, but we can't do anything without the citizens saying yes to it. Uh, and so we had to have them, we, we approved it from the Council to send it to the, to the citizens to vote for. But at the end of the day, ultimately, it's the people's choice, because their voices that are being heard when they vote on these issues. And so I think it's important, uh, for you to go down and represent, uh, the city of Birmingham. I support you a hundred percent in that effort, uh, to really allow our voices to be heard, uh, and allow the citizens of Alabama's voices to be heard. And that's simply what, um, what Senator Marsh is proposing. And the, the issue that we have right now is those, those different tax reforms or tax things that Governor Bentley has proposed to just really fallen on deaf ears. And they've got to figure out ways to solve this gap in the state's budget. And that would be through a combination of budget cuts and new revenues. And if we're continuing to send our revenues to Mississippi and all the other s- states around us that have some form of gambling, whether that's lottery or actual casinos, I think that's doing our citizens a disservice, because we're the ones that are in part sponsoring the initiatives in these other states. And what I would love to see, if this passes in the state and then the citizens passes, to make sure that we have, we have, uh, funding, additional funding for transportation, so that we can, so we can build our Bus Rapid Transit System, that line that goes from east to west. Um, but really even expand that, Mayor, so that we can have a real, uh, working transit system. And as you mentioned earlier, in preparation for the World Games, all of this will be important. I read the article this morning, uh, about, uh, the experience that, that you saw, uh, with what took place in Mississippi with the, with the companies from, uh, Japan. And so if we have an opportunity to provide those type of amenities, uh, to the people that are not only visiting our community, but people who live here, and if they're, if they have the chance to vote on it, then I think that they should have the opportunity to vote and just let people vote for it. And if people support it, then they do. If, if they don't support it, they'll vote no. But we should never suppress the people's right to vote and their voices to be heard. And I think that's what's most important. And I think that's what, what, uh, Senator Marsh and you and others are really lobbying for. So I hope that your trip in Montgomery will be successful. And I don't know where the Council as a whole is, uh, on this issue, but I can tell you that I support it, um, one hundred percent. And, and at some point, we, um, we may present a resolution, uh, in support of the people having a right to vote, whether they vote for or against the gambling and the lottery and all that. I still think that people should, their voices should be heard. And that's all I want to say about it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Um, I, I'm looking at this not from a, a gambling or gaming perspective, but, um, as an economic development tool. Uh, the, uh, Auburn University did a study that indicated that, um, uh, gaming and the lottery would produce somewhere in the neighborhood of about eleven thousand jobs. And that, uh, it would produce revenues in excess of four hundred million dollars each and every year, uh, going forward. Um, most of those jobs that will be created would be wage and hour jobs. Uh, that individuals who are in great need, uh, to have work would have that opportunity. There are some other things that we're looking at, uh, in addition to, uh, the World Games coming here, where people are, are acceptable, uh, to the idea of gaming. When, uh, I've referenced the Southeast US-Japan, uh, meeting in, um, Biloxi, Mississippi, uh, in which, um, many of our Alabama officials were at that meeting. I don't know whether they gam- gamble or not, but I know they were at the meeting. Uh, if you recall, when Katrina and the Other Storms hit, uh, the Gulf area and destroyed the casinos in Mississippi, that was a priority for the state of Mississippi to get those casinos back up. Uh, the loss in revenue, the loss in jobs during that period, um, severely impacted, uh, the area. If you look at all of the surrounding states, each one of those states have, uh, a lottery in place. Georgia, Florida, Mississippi, and, um, uh, Tennessee. Birmingham is the, I mean, Alabama's the only one that's, does not have, uh, the lottery. When you go out and look at, um, parking lots, uh, just go out to the Crossplex. In the afternoon and in the morning, you'll see a lot of cars parked out there, when we have no events at the Crossplex. That's because people are loading up on buses going to Mississippi, going to, um, um, down to Wietumka and other places. Uh, it's time for Birmingham to have the opportunity to, um, uh, develop our, um, area as an entertainment district, as an entertainment area. Uh, we're faced with a lot of, um, um, funding shortfalls at the state level. Uh, I know there's been some talk about the, um, Indians, uh, Native Americans, uh, doing a s- uh, stopgap measure in order for them to have a monopoly on state, uh, gaming. I'm not in favor of that. I think that, um, we should have the opportunity to expand it, uh, to other areas. And I think that that could be worked out. Even the Governor himself during his campaign, his campaigning, said that, uh, while he did not personally endorse gaming, he believed in the right of the people to vote on the item. And that's what this bill calls for. And I think, uh, we need to allow the public to have that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have one other, uh, travel item before we go into old and new business. Uh, Counsel Rafferty, City Council, uh, she's traveling to DC Infrastructure Week, um, May seventh through the twelfth, two thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. Move the item. Aye. All opposed? No. Move the item. Uh, that's- Did you just put it down? You gonna vote no on the next one? Okay. So you voted yes on the- Okay. Then you're gonna vote no on the next one.
Yes.
You changed that, Lee? Okay. Move the item. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye.
No. No.
Mark, Counsel Hoyt, Counsel Abbott, it's no. That item passes. Um, next item we have, uh, old and new business. Counsel Hoyt.
Thank you. Um, Mr. President, the Fairview Neighborhood Association meets on, um, Tuesday, May fifth. Uh, the Thomas Neighborhood also meets today. Uh, the Tuxedo Neighborhood Association meets on May eleventh at the Holy Family Parish. Rising West Princeton Neighborhood Association, uh, meets May eleventh, six o'clock, at the, um, Rising West Princeton Community. Uh, Enslene Neighborhood Association meets on May eleventh at the Enslene Highlands, um, Enslene Highlands, rather, uh, on, at Five Points West Library. On this week, um, we awarded, uh, two scholarships. I think it's, yeah, two scholarships. Uh, one, uh, to Adairi Investor of a thousand dollars and five hundred to, uh, Rena Means. And, um, and that's a student at, uh, Crystal Ray. And so these presentations were made earlier, but we have another one on Friday at the, uh, Crystal Ray, uh, program that we're gonna be making. The next Public Safety Committee meeting, uh, is, uh, May eighteenth at four o'clock at City Hall in the, uh, Council Chambers. Uh, Mr. President, I also want to, um, I think we need to start engaging our attorney. We're paying him. And some of this stuff needs to be referred to the attorney, so we get some research on what the Law Department is suggesting that we, um, have to do. And, and of course, I'm gonna do my own research. We've already got staff already researching, uh, the Alabama Beat Law, so that we are clear about what it is we can and cannot do. Um, and I would, you know, would, um, really beckon all the councils to, to read, um, some of the stuff that's being suggested, because I, I think it's, um, it's, um, it's ill-effective, um, when we exist to serve the people. And if we attempt to do that and empower them in such a way, then I, I think what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I would say that. But today is a great day. Uh, because I celebrate twenty-five years of marriage to my wife. Somebody said, "A one wife." And so, uh, uh, my wife, uh, got me a little band. Uh, it's an anniversary band. I got to get it sized to me. And, uh, but I was just excited, uh, this morning. Um, and I got awakened with a cup of coffee and a kiss and a, and a gift. And so, uh, yeah, twenty-five years and, uh, and we're counting. Uh, and we're having fun too, because we're also empty nesters. And so, I thank God for her, and, uh, she's a wonderful wife and certainly, uh, a wonderful mother. Uh, my daughter also travels to, uh, Portugal, uh, this week, uh, to study abroad. And so we're very proud of Maya. Um, she made the Dean's List. And it looks like she's gonna make the Dean's List the second semester as well. So, uh, we're very proud of the, the work she's doing at Spelman. And, um, and she has a job for the fall. So, uh, she doing all her stuff on her own. So I'm just really proud, uh, that her mother has instilled in her to be a self-starter. And, um, so, uh, just, I don't have a one child, you all, so it feel like I'm bragging. I am. And, uh, because your only child don't always have to make the right decision. But when they do, I think you have to celebrate them, as we do all of our children. So, uh, I'm very proud of Maya. Thank you. And so we ask for her traveling grace, that you all will pray for her to have a great experience, um, going to Speedy, um, the first time she's gone that far abroad. And so, uh, we want that to be a great experience for her. So thank you so very much, uh, Mr. President, and thank you for your leadership and thank you for this short meeting. Bless you. Bless you beyond measure.
We trying to get out of here. Counsel Skiles?
Thank you, Ms. President. As always, I want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham for affording me the opportunity to be their voice. Tonight, we do have a Neighborhood Association meeting. They meet at the East Pinson Valley Recreation Center, which is Apple Valley Neighborhood Association. The president there is Larry Butler. And, uh, so we'll be at that Neighborhood Meeting tonight. Also at six PM, same location, uh, will be the Brighterwood Neighborhood Association, and they too will meet at six o'clock. So seven o'clock is Apple Valley. Brighterwood is at six PM. I do want to thank, um, all of my students. Uh, we had a wonderful time at Huffman High School. They had the induction of the National Honor Society, uh, on last week. I'm always, uh, very thrilled with my students. They know that they have attended place in Mama Skiles's heart. So I just want to say again, congratulations to all of my students. Can't wait to be attending, uh, their various graduations. And I will say this, um, the way we change, the way people view our city, and most importantly, our young people, is that when they see that they have opportunity and right exposure, that makes a difference. Uh, to be educated with no exposure means that you still more than likely would live in a community that you don't want to be in. But with the right exposure, good education, you can be at the top. I also want to say, excuse me, uh, that the item earlier that came up, don't want to, uh, delve too much into that. Uh, but I will just say that my vote, uh, was based upon facts presented and nothing else. Uh, and with that having said, Mr. President, I hope that we take this fiscal agent, uh, issue up very, very quickly. Um, I think that Council members have a great rapport with Rev. Birmingham. We want to keep that in place. Uh, and they have basically been very dutiful, uh, to this Council in, in various arenas. And, you know, they're not paid. And so I'm hoping, uh, Mr. President, uh, that I have your undivided attention to still say, because I'll just keep coming back every week. I don't want to put you on the rooftop. I'd like to s- for you to stay in the house with me. Uh, but every week, uh, until we get something resolved, we want, we want to talk about getting that done. Uh, because, Mr. President, you told me to lean on you, and I am on the everlasting arm for as long as you alive. Uh, and, and, and is the Council President. Uh, I really, Mr. President, uh, would seek your assistance in helping with the Mayor and Mr. Patton. And I think that Mr. Patton is even willing. All we have to do is ask. I've never known him not to be a willing partner, uh, if he's asked respectfully. So with that having said, Mr. President, I appreciate you allowing me to speak at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Counsel Rafferty, or, I'm sorry, Counsel Tyson?
Thank you, President. Um, Mar- Monday, May the eleventh, West End Minor Neighborhood would be having a meeting at New Hope Baptist Church at six PM. Tuesday, May the twelfth, Arlington West End will be at the West End Library, six PM. South Tittysville will be meeting at the Tittysville Library on the twelfth at six PM. Uh, the PIC, uh, meeting will be next Wednesday, March the thirteenth, in Conference Room D and E. All, uh, everything should be submitted by Wednesday, March the sixth, no later than two PM. The UAB Athletic, uh, uh, Assessment Task Force meeting will be held at the Barto Arena on Thursday at five thirty to six thirty. On next Friday and Saturday, District Six will be having their Black Women and Girls Roundtable Youth Summit at the Winona High School on Friday. Uh, I want to make sure that all the councils, y'all will receive a letter today. I would like for all of y'all to attend. It would be a gro- great program. We have Gwendolyn Jackson Smith from Georgia Tech STEM Program will actually be one, one of the workshop, uh, teachers. Um, we have our own Counselor Skiles will be actually one of our, uh, one of our workshops speaker, along with some federal judges, along with some municipal court judges. Um, and just, uh, uh, Vivica Fox is one of the, is our afternoon speaker. And Congresswoman Tara Sewell would be one of our morning speakers. Uh, this program is set up to empower Black women and girls. We have, right now, four hundred people signed up, uh, for the program. We have students at Winona, but we have, uh, people from all over the community. These are everyday citizens. We have pastors' wives. We have doctors from UAB that will be attending. This is a, this is an empowerment summit to educate, motivate, and mobilize our youth and people that's underserved. And I am so excited, because this is the, we have always had small talking sessions, but we have never had anything this large. Uh, and for Vivica Fox to actually, just to think enough to take out time to come here for a little bit of nothing. for a little bit of nothing, in order to inspire our young people, you know, it just makes me feel really, really good about the whole program. And we were also, on that Saturday, we will have a day of service. We would, uh, we partnered with the AKAs, uh, uh, that's one of our partners. We would be doing a day of service at Woodwood Park, uh, starting at ten o'clock in the morning. We would be doing a facelift to Woodwood Park. The, uh, playground set was in very bad shape, we have about a hundred and some, uh, okay, we have about a hundred kids that actually play in that park, so we'll be, we will be giving it a big facelift. And I also wanna make sure, uh, President Austin, that we have some burnt down apartments right off of Fourteenth by the park, and we have the national AKAs coming into Birmingham to do a facelift on that park, and they are gonna see that mess that's sitting there and have been for years. So I would definitely like to try to get something done about that. And that ends my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rafferty.
Thank you. Neighborhood meetings, Thursday, May seventh, is Eastwood, at Eastwood Library, six thirty P M. And Monday, May eleventh, is Roebuck, at Dot Hawkins Recreation Center at seven P M. The Transportation and Communications Committee will be meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, May sixth, in Conference Room A at twelve thirty. I'd also like to announce that the Society of St. Andrews Volunteers glean produce from farmers at Pepper Place Farms Market during the market season. Last year, they recovered over to thirteen thousand pounds of food and distributed it to the Community Food Bank of Central Alabama. They are currently recr- recruiting volunteers for this market season. It requires approximately one point five hours on a Saturday from eleven to twelve thirty, and you can sign up to glean one week of a month or serve as a substitute gleaner. It runs from May twenty-sixth until October, and the new volunteers will be training Saturday, May twenty-sixth, at Pepper Place, from ten to twelve thirty. For more information, you can contact Mary Botts at two four five three two one four. I'd also like to mention that the trip to DC is also allowing me, uh, to finally have a face-to-face meeting with Uber Corporate, to try to get their side of the proposal, which we have not seen yet. So, um, I wanted Counsel Abbott and Counsel Scales to know that, since they both sit on transportation. I'd also like to congratulate my son, Morgan, for making the advanced band and honors band for the next school year, which is impressive for somebody who just...
Awesome.
He's been playing the Pleasant Tuba for the last eight we- eight months, and, um, last but not least, I'd like to wish a very happy birthday to my grandmother, May Phipps, who lives in Opalika. Um, she's raised seven children, fourteen grandchildren, fifteen great, great, great-grandchildren, and one great-great-granddaughter, and there's still more in the pot going. She is an amazing woman and is due the greatest of honor and respect today, her birthday, May fifth. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Parker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. A couple of announcements, uh, the, uh, park board, uh, will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at the Oxmoor Valley, um, Community Center, and, uh, want to, uh, thank everyone at the Botanical Gardens, uh, for hosting us the last couple of meetings. Uh, as you know, Legion Field, um, has some areas that are under renovation, and the administrative lobby area, uh, is experiencing some renovations. So, anyway, just wanna thank, uh, people at Botanical Garden, and speaking of Legion Field, wanna thank everyone, uh, for the Funk Fest, uh, that was held on Saturday. So, I want to, uh, thank the city of Birmingham and the mayor's office, and also the council, and also everyone within the city, and also for everyone who came out to, uh, participate and, uh, see the Funk Fest. So, anyway, uh, I don't see Mr. Jenkins, so I don't think he has any announcements today, but that concludes my report, uh, today. So, thank you, sir.
Council Lundie?
Thank you, leadership. I really enjoyed this morning out in Pratt City. Uh, we were on Fox Six, and it was Red Rock and Valley Trail Day on Fox Six, and J.J. Pruitt highlighted, uh, Pratt City and the, uh, development going on out in Pratt, and, uh, we walked part of the trail. And, uh, that was a great turnout by, uh, a few of my close friends, uh, as I said this morning. We really had fun with the neighborhood leadership and all the members of the community that came out. It was a great showing, uh, and Pratt City, uh, is probably, um, one of the premier communities in our country with how we are, uh, building ourself back. So, I'm excited to have, uh, Ms. Juanita Brew here, Sandusky's president, uh, Eric Hall, who works in my office, and, uh, all the folks in District Nine who participated, uh, in this morning's event. On a sad note, uh, Kenneth Madison was, uh, killed in a motorcycle, uh, accident on Arkadelphia. He was a, uh, resident of District Nine, Hooper City. His folks are the ones that do the horse farming and, uh, got all the chickens over there in Hooper City. Saw his daddy today when I left, uh, Pratt to get me a little breakfast, and I told him we would, uh, announce it today so that we might keep the family lifted in prayer. The funeral is this Saturday at, uh, eleven at Metropolitan A M E Zion Church, and, uh, he was, um, uh, prematurely killed in a one-person motorcycle accident on Arkadelphia. So y'all keep that family lifted, Madison, Kenneth Madison, his family lifted in prayer. Economic Development will meet, uh, on Monday, uh, four P M., May eleventh. Get your stuff in to, by tomorrow noon to Jose Perry. Uh, Mr. President, that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Protem.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I wanna move for a resolution of sympathy. My good friend and, uh, Wardell Morris lost his mother on this past week, uh, Anis O'Lewis, who passed on last Thursday, April twenty-eighth.
All opposed.
Uh, move the item?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed.
Uh, well, I pr- thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Council, for your unanimous support for this resolution. She was eighty-nine years old, um, had twenty-one grandchildren, thirty-eight great-grandchildren, and seven great-great-grandchildren. That's a blessing. And, uh, as it moves, the, we move the resolution, uh, my prayers are with his family. I actually ran my first campaign out of Wardell's kitchen in his house, in Green Acres. So, uh, we continue prayers for them, uh, the funeral is set for this Saturday. Outside of that, uh, today, Oakwood Place Neighborhood Association meeting will be in Harrison Park at four. Uh, next Monday, May eleventh, we have Oxmoor Neighborhood Meeting at Oxmoor Valley Community Center at six, six thirty, West End Manor Neighborhood Association meeting will be held at New Hope Baptist Church. And, um, we had some meetings yesterday with, uh, the comprehensive plan, the Southwest Area Framework Plan meetings will begin here soon, so we'll be announcing, uh, committee members, uh, as we look at the comprehensive plan and the, uh, plans for, uh, southwestern area of Birmingham, uh, we'll be providing you with dates coming up soon. I also wanna congratulate, uh, Council Rafferty, uh, the new athletics director has been named at U A B, uh, Mark Ingram, uh, who is actually having his official announcement this afternoon at Regent's Field, uh, very extensive background and career in athletics administration with S E C schools, and, uh, has spent some time at Temple University, we now, uh, is now gonna be named the athletics director at U A B. And last but not least, um, Happy Mother's Day, uh, to all the mothers, uh, that cut this upcoming weekend, uh, especially my mama, uh, Linda Roberson, who I love to death, uh, my mother-in-law, as I rode down twenty fifty-nine, headed east to the airport at five o'clock this morning, dropping her off at the airport, the lights were on, it was very bright to, going towards the airport, um, at about four thirty this morning. And, uh, I just dropped her off, she's headed out to Los Angeles for her, uh, Mother's Day and family, and to my beautiful wife, Niva, uh, who's a mother to my great three kids that I love, uh, Leah, uh, Trey, and Ava. And, uh, Happy Mother's Day to, to all the mothers here at City Hall throughout the city of Birmingham, and, um, that ends my announcements, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we had one item, uh, that, uh, Council Scales, Mr. Clerk, um, was voting, she voted the wrong way on the item, she wanted to change her vote, uh, and so, we need to bring that back up, or do we, um, can you just mark her vote as a yes? She was trying, we were...
I mean, you've declared it already, so...
Okay. So, let's move to reconsider item nine and, uh, um, no, uh, nine and seventeen.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, the item is before us, and we, the motion needs to be, again, to refer both of these to committee of the whole.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we refer both these items to, uh, committee of the whole. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, that's unanimous, uh, those items will be referred to the committee of the whole, everybody voting in the affirmative of sending those to the committee.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If you don't mind, uh, to that item, uh, and to A L dot com and to our special reporter, Joseph Bryant, uh, please correct your story that you have released, uh, as it relates to this item, 'cause it's incorrect, and I know, uh, in the trustworthiness of your profession and what you do, and I think it's great, uh, that you will correct your report that you've already put out there, this item is now going to committee of the whole.
And it was always, it was always going to committee of the whole, from the first vote that we took this morning.
Exactly. Thank you, Ms. President, I just wanna make sure that's known. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
'Cause I did vote, not knowing exactly.
Gotcha.
Okay, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Mr. President...
Council what?
Um, to, to that item, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, we get a chance, I have met with the contractor, but, uh, but he was supposed to make, uh, them avail to the, to the committee. That needs to happen.
We'll make sure that does.
And, um, we don't need to treat them any different than any others, uh, because if we don't, um, deal with this item properly, then I'm afraid that there's gonna be a pattern.
Yeah.
And we want to, uh, avoid that.
We will, we'll, we'll definitely deal with it in committee of the whole.
I know they like to make it rain, but we, sometimes, you know, you don't need rain all the time.
All right. Uh, my announcements are, um, I would also join the council and, um, and Mr. Protem and the rest of the council in wishing all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day.
Yes.
Um, Happy Mother's Day to Camila Gray Lewis as well. She's a future mother, but she's a expecting mother. Um, so, Happy Mother's Day to her, Happy Early Mother's Day to her, Expecting Mother's Day. Uh, Forest Park, South Avondale, meets tonight, May fifth, from six thirty to seven thirty, Avondale Library. Eastlake meets tonight, again, from seven to eight, at New Rising Star Baptist Church. Wauhoma meets Thursday, the seventh, from six to seven, at Church of, Eastlake Church of God in Christ. Fountain Heights meets May the ninth, from ten to twelve, at Fountain Heights Rec Center. There will be a groundbreaking, uh, for the Rotary Trail located at two thousand first Avenue North, uh, May fourteenth, beginning at five thirty P M., at the, uh, at the, at the location for Rotary Trail, fol- followed by a rooftop, uh, set reception at, uh, Station one twenty-one, which is the building right across from it, where the entire expanse of Rotary Trail can be seen. Please, if your schedule permits, make plans to be there. Also, that's at five thirty P M. No, on May fourteenth, Thursday, May the fourteenth. Um, it's on, uh, like, First Avenue South and Twentieth Street. You know where they're, where all that construction's going on with the, you, if you're driving south, going to the south side on Twentieth, and you pass right over and get to First Avenue South, right there to the left, where, um, it's, it's, uh, yeah, BBVA compass in the end that, um, uh, Mama Goldberg's and all of that in that building, Station one twenty-one, right in the middle of those, is where that, um, where that construction's taking place in that area. That's the, uh, new Rotary Trail. Um, the final thing is, I wanna thank our... Counsel, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Abbott, I thought, okay, uh, yeah, well, we'll let Counsel Abbott close us out today, I thought you already did your announcement, I apologize.
No, it's probably because I was late getting here this morning. And because Alag- Alabama Gas was at my house with a bulldozer, and I had to stop and discuss what they were planning on doing with that bulldozer, like, 'cause they'd made marks up through my yard all the way to my house, like they were gonna come dig everything up. So I was late, that's probably why you forgot about me. But anyway, the, um, next Budget and Finance Committee and Economic Development meeting will be Monday, May eleventh, at four P M., and we would very much appreciate it if everyone would get their requests in on or prior to Wednesday, May sixth, which is tomorrow at noon. And, um, Tuesday, which is today, at six P M., the Birmingham International Women's Day is being celebrated, they're having an awards dinner at The Club. The Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association meets this evening at six thirty at the Avondale Library. The, um, on Thursday, the fifty-first Annual Greater Birmingham Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, I'm sure the mayor already reminded us of that. The buffet starts at six thirty A M., which I'm gonna aim for, but six thirty is pretty early in the morning, and the, the speaker is John Colan. And, um, Friday, Jefferson State Community College has their twenty fifteen graduation at the Alabama Theater, and that will be one thirty P M. And of course, on Sunday, it's Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers and all the people who have mothers, which I think takes all of us in. Um, I wanted to say congratulations to my granddaughter, Ashley. She was selected for the Pelham High School Dance Team, she's going to high school next year, and of course, that was a really big deal for her. I think if she hadn't gotten in, she wouldn't have gone to high school. So, uh, but anyway, she was selected and is very happy, she's been dancing for ten years now, and she's fourteen years old, so she started when she was four, and, uh, we've been to a lot of, a lot of, um, dance recitals. But anyway, she's excited, and I'm excited, we're all excited. And, um, I think that's, I think that's all. Oh, one other thing, Council Rafferty provided me some very exciting information, that the Alabama Supreme Court ruled against payday lenders in the database case, which means that there will be a database, um, to enforce the existing five hundred dollar limit on how much people can borrow at one time from these payday lenders. So, it's not the biggest victory, which would be doing something about the four hundred and fifty-six percent interest rate they charge, but it is a big deal that the Alabama Supreme Court ruled in our favor. So, you know, we have to take every little positive step we get, um, with some cheers and then hope that we get the rest of the positive steps pretty soon. So, um, that is all for me, thank you.
Council, like you said, you have one...
Just have one last one, um, was going up Warrior, not Warrior Road, but, uh, Lum Avenue, um, Mr. Patton, and this, I guess for P, uh, P E P, but that road is Sotoa. And, well, and then I wanna say Warrior Road as well, they have, the gas company has come back in, and, um, after the waterworks have come through and, and done their painting and dug up, and it's, it's almost tore my car yesterday, coming down Wa- uh, Lum Avenue and getting on to Warrior Road to go home, um, it was, uh, it was terrible. So that, it's really torn up, so we really need them to go behind, then we get them to, to pay, and, uh, and then on Avenue I, forty-seven, uh, Forty-seventh Street and Avenue I, again, the gas company, uh, need to go back and backfill, I know they may not be finished, but you shouldn't tear up my car in the, in the process, or anybody's car, quite frankly, but, uh, if we can get them to deal with that, uh, and I may be planning to make a call to them too, but we wanna get that address. Uh, I'm not sure what utility company, there's a cut from probably, uh, Princeton Hospital all the way to the, um, to, uh, that's from Super Highway, Third Avenue, that's a cut, and it cuts off right at the Regent's Bank, is where, and it's just like this here, all the way down.
All right. All right, we wanna thank Officer Lewis from downtown Substation and Officer Frederick Burks from the East Precinct for providing our security this morning, and it is still morning. Uh, also wanna remind the council members that we do have a, um, picture, a photo, that we have to take immediately following council meeting, so, isn't that right?
Yes.
Yes. Well, you better hurry up and get it while we all here.
I tell ya.
Um, so we, we're, there's a plan for us to have a photo, um, today, right, the fol- immediately following council meeting, uh, and hopefully you all can stay long enough to do it, but I understand if you have to go, um, 'cause they should be ready, they should have been waiting on it. But, anyway, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Let's move. I'll move.
Third.
Second.
Fourth.
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.